Good morning and welcome to Tuesday, January 10th, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, we will open the regular meeting for closed session. If the clerk could please read off the two closed session agenda items.
Item one, pursuant to government code 54957.6, Conference with County Designated Labor Negotiator Judy Hawkins regarding the following employee organizations: Sheriff's Management Unit, Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union. Item two, public employment, pursuant to government code 54957B1, title, county executive officer.
At this time, we get any public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Okay, and seeing none in the room, we will convene in a closed session until nine o'clock. Thank you. Good, okay. Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, January 10th, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting. Happy New Year, everyone. At this time, I will turn it over to the clerk to report out of closed session. Earlier this morning, we went into closed session.
Item one, pursuant to government code 54957.6, Conference with County Designated Labor Negotiator Judy Hawkins regarding the following employee organizations: Sheriff's Management Unit, Calaveras County Public Safeties Employees Association, Deputy Sheriff's Association, Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item two, public employment, pursuant to government code 54957B1, title, county executive officer. Board action, no reportable action taken.
At this time, could you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is election of chair and vice chair. If the clerk could please read out agenda item number three.
Item number three, action item, Clerk of the Board of Supervisors, election of the 2023 Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
This time, I will bring it to the board.
Madam, Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Supervisor Tofanelli as Chair.
Okay, there is a motion. And before I go on, is there any public comment? No? Okay. Is there any public comment online?
No online public comment.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Lot of enthusiasm there, Ben.
I feel encouraged.
All right, we got a second. With that, is there others in favor of Supervisor Tofanelli, Board Chair for the 2023 year?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have any?
I want to thank the board. I want to thank Jack for nominating me. And I want to thank Amanda for the great year she put in. The last meeting we had in December was for Marita and Sam. I didn't have a chance to thank her. It was her last meeting and you did a great job. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. With that being said, I will move on to the election of the Vice Chair. We have a nomination for Vice Chair.
Nominate Supervisor Garimendi.
I'll second.
The nomination and second. Public comment on this item? Is there any public comment on this item in the room? None? Online?
There is no online public comment.
With that, we'll bring it back to the board. A motion and a second. Call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Jack.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
We've done it before. We know how to do it.
We did. We've done it before. We have. Okay, with that being done, we move on to staff announcements.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, would you like to pause to, for me to change your nameplates?
Well, I thought I would get through staff announcements and do the winter storm update and then take a five-minute break and see if anybody wants to change chairs. I'll tell you this time, I really don't care. I'm not going to point chairs. If everybody's comfortable where they're at, I'm fine with it. So you may want to move the name tags, Chair and Vice Chair thing. So can we get through staff announcements and winter storm update? Okay, so we'll move on to staff announcement. Madam Clerk.
Staff announcements, this is time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Okay, and I see Lisa has a staff announcement. We'll start with Lisa. Is she online?
Good morning and congratulations Supervisor Tofanelli and Vice Chair Garimendi, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. I just received an announcement that our rabies clinics will be starting up again in April. We are looking to possibly provide one in March, but we're working on that. I just wanted to remind our community and for their pets especially, to build an emergency supply kit. Those kits should include water, pet food for at least three days to two weeks, food and water bowls, medicines and medical records, crate or pet carriers, treats, toys, and bedding, collar or harnesses with ID tags, rabies tag, and a leash, pet litter and litter box, if appropriate, newspaper, paper towels, and plastic bags. I also wanted to mention on the environmental house side that if your domestic water well has been affected by flooding, it's real important that you assess the well after the waters recede. And we do recommend that you use bottled water if your well is affected this way. We do have some information on our Environmental Management Agency website that will help you with the disinfection of a water well. In addition to that, if you are on a sewage disposal septic system, you want to make sure that once the water's received, that you check on your tanks to make sure that the levels of the floodwaters are not in your tanks. And also make sure that if there has been any, any, disinfect any areas of sewage disposal that may have been affected and do not drive over any of your sewage disposal areas, including the leach lines and any of the port caps. And as always, we keep our pets and our children away from those areas that might be suspect. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Robert?
Good morning. Thank you. Our road crews are currently doing everything that they can to open roads and clean culverts and they work through the New Year's holiday. So I would like to at least acknowledge from our part, or at least all of our parts, that the great work that they're doing. It's a small crew. Most of those guys live locally, so they're affected by what's going on on our roads and the power and all that, just as much as everyone else. But they do care. They care for the community quite a bit. And any amount of patience that the public can give to them is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
And I didn't say anything about Lisa. Was there any board comments about Lisa? Any questions with Lisa? Was there any public questions or comments on Lisa? Anything Lisa had to say? Hearing none? Okay, and Robert, does anybody have any questions with Robert? Public works?
Just want to say that I've seen those guys out day and night and they've all been doing, and ladies. And they've all been doing a wonderful job and we appreciate all the people with their feet on the ground.
And I agree with that. They've done a wonderful job and they've done a lot of work. So you guys and your crew, Scott and his crew, and you and your crew, good job, Robert. Great job. Any public comments on public works? None? Doug, you're up.
Good morning, Chair members of the board, Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. I just wanted to announce to the public that we have a storm damage repair policy that is tailored to rapid repairs. We have had some tree strikes, some structural damage, not significant thankfully in most areas. But we want to make the public aware that if there is damage to a structure where you need rapid repairs to weather in the building, the storm damage policy is generally related to structural damage, decks, roof structure, things like that. We are waiving construction documents on submittal if it's in relation to storm damage. You can repair with like materials up to 70-pound ground snow load, which is most of the county. You can repair with like materials. It's an over-the-counter permit. You just declare your scope of work. We issue the permit and we handle any documentation that is necessary in the field. That includes trust repair diagrams, any engineering that may be necessary above 70 pounds. We just let them know what they need to have on site. We also want to let the public know that in emergencies, the initial clearing of any debris and initial construction to try and weather in is common prior to a permit. It doesn't trigger any code compliance issues. If they need to get to work, they can get to work. They can come in as soon as they're able to and we can work with them on getting that permit issued and get some inspections out there. We'd like to be able to see the initial work, but if they have to felt in a roof, for instance, as long as we can peel that felt back and look at it, they can get that rain out of the house, start drying things in. Also, we want to identify to the public when a permit is required because we do have that over-the-counter process, but there's a lot of work that doesn't require a permit, such as replacing any carpet, replacing less than 200 square foot of siding or roofing materials, including deck surface, sheet rock, exterior cladding, any type of roof materials, including felt, metal roofing, composite shingles, you name it. If you exceed 200 square foot on any repair, then a permit would be required. But there's a broad scope of minor repairs that can be done that does not require a permit. Wanted to make sure the public was aware of that. And if there's any questions, they can contact our front counter.
Any board questions? Any public questions? Are there any online?
No.
None? Thank you, Doug. All right, is there any other staff announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to the winter storm update. You want to read this out? Madam Clerk?
Item four, informational item, OES, received an update presentation from staff on the ongoing winter storms which began on or about December 29th, 2022.
Do we have John?
Yeah.
Online.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. John Osborne, your Director of Emergency Services, currently online from the Mountain Ranch EOC. Thanks for wired up the end of my driveway. I do have an update for you. As of this morning, our information flow inbound has been a little bit slow, primarily due to communications issues. We currently have, so we're in day two of a seven-day forecast. Today is forecasted to be major impacts in the valley and foothills with heavy rain flooding and wind and thunderstorms. About 3:30 or 4:00 AM this morning, we had a series of tornado warnings. And what that essentially means is that the National Weather Service was actually seeing a tornado begin to form and rotate on radar. We went through two versions of that warning, one in the northwest corner of the county and then a second one that was, that covered most of the entire western part of the county down to copper. So that's, we're in day two of this. Day Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, call for minor impacts with rain in the valley and the foothills and snow in the mountains. Saturday, it bumps up to a moderate rain and flooding in the valley and foothills and snow in the mountains. And then Sunday, back down to minor in the valley and the foothills and moderate snow in the upcountry. Currently, well, the last list that I have contains two full closures, road closures, and four partial closures. I'm sure that that is somewhat higher. I'm aware of at least three trees down across Mountain Ranch Road. I know there was an issue on Highway 12 earlier today, was closed at one point and down to one lane. And I've been getting various other reports via text message. So we're kind of a mess in that. I do know that PG&E, we have some customers out. At one point yesterday, we got to about, down to about 400 customers out. And when I spoke with our PG&E representative this morning, they were still gathering that, those numbers up for us for the latest. We continue to operate the EOC at Level 2, which is limited. And a great big shout out to some of our partners, actually to all of our partners. Everybody from the Water Utility Districts, our own Public Works folks, Caltrans District 10, our support folks, HHSA, Public Health, the Sheriff's Office, probation, have really all stepped right into assistance mode and rendered assistance however they can, whenever they can, and done so without complaint. It's been a pleasure to work with all of the agencies across the county and to try and keep us, keep our heads above waters, both figuratively and literally. Let me go switch back. Sorry, I'm working off of my phones because I did not intend to be delivering this at my kitchen table this morning. So far, we have addressed 13 resource requests. We have zero of those open and zero have been pushed to the state. That we covered. We currently, yesterday, when we got, we caught a break in the weather yesterday. When the system actually pushed south of the county, we have been leveraging our Vallecito hand crews to pre-fill bags. Those two crews were able to visit almost all of the sites. And yesterday filled nearly 4,000 sandbags in anticipation of our weather incoming tonight. I'm sorry, I would be remiss if I did not remember to mention one of our most valuable partnerships and that's been with the City of Angels Camp and the City Administrator's Office. The whole Angels Camp crew has been wonderful, so thanks for reminding me on that, Cameron. Back to the Vallecito crews, they have circulated, they filled 4,000 sandbags yesterday alone. And we, our Public Works crew was able to deliver between, I think, 12 and 19 tons to each of the 13 sites where bags are available. And fortunately, on my way out of the office late yesterday evening, I saw some of our local residents right on Government Center Drive leveraging those pre-filled bags and taking some home. So I think that's about all I have. I apologize for the chockiness of this report bouncing between two cell phones has, is not as fun as you might think. My kids probably could have done it better because they play on their phones all day. With that, with that, I welcome any questions or comments.
Thank you, John, and you shaved.
Yes, sir, actually last week. I've just been hiding from you guys. Been a smidge busy.
All right, well, thank you for the report. Does any board member have any comments or questions for John? And I just want to bring up that this is on here and it's going to continue to be on here, at least till we get through the storms that we have. Amanda and I and Sarah and Craig, when we were doing our agenda review, talked about putting this on there. So we look for every week, for at least, at least probably the next two or three weeks, a report, an update from you, John. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes. Is there any public comments? I see Kathy Galino coming up.
Good morning, Chair, Honorable Board, Kathy Galino, Economic Development. So a couple of updates that I'd like to share with the board are on the reporting forms that are online for businesses and residents that have sustained damage. At this point, we have 60 that we've received. And big shout out to the Building Department for actually going out in the field and doing the inspections and checking these facilities and buildings out. Of those, we have 18 that have major damage, four minor damage, 38 affected, for a total of 60. Of those major damaged, one is a business, 17 are homes. Out of the minors, two are businesses, the other two are homes. We are working with CalOES as well as SBA. And it looks like we will be doing an SBA declaration for physical damages. So I will keep everybody updated, but please, again, remind your constituents, the community, to please, if they've had damage, to please go on the Calaveras County website under Emergency Operations and please report your damage. That's it.
Thank you, Kathy. Any public comment in the room? Seeing none, is there any public comment online?
No.
And no board comments or questions? Yes?
Doug, if I may ask you, where, is there a focused area where a majority of these homes and businesses that are in the worst shape are?
The vast majority are in the Valley Springs area. There's a few that have sustained some damage in Arnold. One of them was a major damage in the Arnold area from a tree strike. Most of it is flooding damage and most of it's concentrated in the Valley Springs area.
Cosgrove Creek? For the most part?
Agreed, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Supervisor Stopper?
Yes, sir.
Hey, good morning again. It's John, your OES Director. Specifically, Grouse and the neighborhood around Grouse and then St. Andrews and then the Castle Rock Trailer Park that was evacuated in the early morning hours of the 31st. And just to extend our gratitude to Doug and his crew, what we thought was going to take them about three or four days to get done, they got done in one day. And we, through Kathy and Rebecca Callen, devised the reporting method and we've been sending them as fast as we get them to Doug and Doug has been knocking them out. Doug and his crew have been knocking them out almost as fast as we can send them over, so.
It's really easy. Thank you, John.
When you don't know what you're doing, you can cut a lot of corners, so. What? Never mind, never mind.
Hi, yes, Craig.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I just wanted to mention, you know, it's dangerous. There's so many people that are helping in this, but I do see Cory sitting back here and her team, along with Red Cross, Lisa Medina, Animal Control, all these folks. It shows up, if they're not prepared, it'll show up really fast later when they're really needed. But they're one step ahead, getting all those things ready, warming centers, shelters, and those kinds of things. And like many others, have been out responding, being first responders, but also getting things ready. And I just wanted to give a shout out to those folks too for their efforts.
Yes. Thank you. Any other board comments? Amanda?
Doug, I have a question for you. Sorry, don't sit down.
You're getting your steps in for the day.
Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt crazy as you were walking. So on this reporting that you guys are discussing that is also happening in the city, since they found a city building, are they given the same opportunity to those who have had damage within the city limit? Or how is that reporting working if it's coming to the, the website is directing to the county?
I think John could probably speak better to the reporting collaboration between the city and the county. For our part, the city has contract inspectors and they're providing those services similar to what we're doing in the unincorporated areas.
Okay. That's it. John?
Madam Supervisor, that's true and it's reported in different places. But we've been at the hip with the city and we've been cross-reporting to each other to avoid double inspections as well as share information for our initial damage assessment and then to really act as good neighbors so that if there is a serious issue that the contractors can't address in the city, we can help them and vice versa.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? No? Okay, thank you, John. And keep it updated through the emails as you can, if you have been. Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. Our pleasure.
All right. At this time, we will take a five-minute break. We're good?
Yes.
We're back from our break and we'll go on to general public comments. Madam Clerk, do you want to read this?
Yes. General public comment, any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotment period, time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the, I'm sorry, I'm reading this. It will be continued at the last item of the business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of the comments to be heard.
Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, hi. I'm Christine and I'm reading for a volunteer who couldn't be here today because of the rain. A lot of people couldn't make it. So even though I don't work in the dog shelter, I'm just quoting what she wrote. She said, "As a volunteer working in the dog building of the shelter 10 or more hours per week, I'd like to voice two major concerns to be taken into account in the new building plans. First, I have observed regular injuries in the dogs and experienced a number of injuries myself caused by the chain link fencing used to construct the kennels. The dogs can and do make their faces raw to the point of bleeding trying to push through the links with their noses. Additionally, they can do, they can and do injure their toes and nails, jumping and clawing at the wire. It's not at all unusual for dogs to have blood on the floor or walls of their kennels, directly resulting from chain link injuries." I was there volunteering yesterday and I know that there were problems with the dog area. Humans are also susceptible to chain link injuries. I personally had my hands and fingers caught in the wire doors several times as a dog tried, am I up? As a dog tried to pull away hard from me desperate to get out of their kennel. I've had wire edges catch my clothes and scrape my skin. The clunky lever locks stick, the lock stick and jam. Just trying to open or secure the door takes handler's attention away from keeping ourselves, others, and the dogs safe. Chain link may be cost-effective and appropriate for large outdoor enclosures that function as dog runs and play areas. In those spaces, the dogs will be running and romping. Very rarely will they be hurting themselves repeatedly against the fences trying to get free and thus injuring themselves. But in any kennel or living space, the wall materials should be smooth, solid, and secure. The second strong concern, let me know when time, okay. Second strong concern I have is for creating a safe, relatively quiet pathway for dogs to be brought in and taken out of their kennels. Handlers currently run a gauntlet of dogs a few feet away on both sides as we take them in and out with only chain link between the dogs in their kennels and the dog being walked by. It is generally chaotic and basically always stressful for everyone. With very strong reactive dogs, the chaos can pose added danger to dogs and their handlers. The exiting, entering dogs have to pass all the other dogs as they bark and growl and jump in their fear and upset. Handlers can make errors as the stress all around them affects their decision-making. The design of the new shelter needs to support calm, The design of the new shelter needs to support calm in the animals and the staff and volunteers." Okay.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name's Alex Sage Walker, and I had my friend drive me here today, but when we're pulling up and looking at the rain, I'm just seeing my co-volunteers out there with freckles, the red husky, and most of us volunteers are no spring chickens. And, you know, they're getting there at seven and pulling the dogs out in those circumstances, and I see them walking, we always walk them, walk them around here. It was just, to see them out there, I just want to give them credit for that, because it's not fun getting up in this kind of weather to go do that. So I'm here today to address my concerns about the sizes of the kennels for the dogs during the construction of the new animal shelter. I do not know who the county will take its direction from concerning the size of the kennels, but our Animal Services has special needs that may be overlooked by both the Coret Institute and the architect involved. Ninety percent of the dogs coming into the shelter are extra-large breeds. We have Great Pyrenees, we have Anatoleons, we have big Huskies, Rottweilers, large German Shepherds, and these are what is ending up at the shelter a lot. Sometimes they come in pairs, so to keep them from stressing out, we put them in the same kennel. So, and sometimes the large kennels are not available, but you have to make a decision, and they like to be together, and then they're really cramped. This translates into the fact that we require ninety percent of the kennels in this new shelter to be six XL, that's six foot extra-large. If we're getting twenty-six kennels, at least twenty of those should be extra-large. All the quarantine kennels should be six extra-large as well. The dog beds in all the kennels take up a substantial amount of space, also limiting the maneuverability of the animals. We don't get the fluffy, small dogs so much because we live in the country. When we do, it is often in pairs, which means they also require adequate space. We get some working herding dogs who are very active, and they are suffering in the medium cages. There's no room for them to move because of the bed taking up most of the floor space, so they end up with bloody paws from their constant jumping on the chain link cages. Remember, the dogs only get thirty minutes, around thirty minutes every morning to go out of these cages, especially when we're full. If we're not as full, then they, sometimes they get an hour, but usually not. I know there are a lot of important issues such as soundproofing, outside dog runs, drainage, the chain link fencing are built out of, and the veterinary care, foster-
Ma'am?
Oh.
Your time's up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any other public comments in the room? Seeing none, is there any online?
There are no online public comments.
Okay, seeing no other public comments, we will close the public comment period and move on to the consent agenda. I'll read this one, Stacy. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, that will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Is there any Board member wish to remove an item from the consent? No? All right, we'll ask staff, is there any staff member wish to remove an item? Is there any online?
There's no, no online requests.
Is there any public member wish to remove something from the consent? Online?
There are none.
None? Okay, I am open for a motion on consent. Motion by Supervisor Stopper, second by Paulendorf. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. We will move on to the regular agenda. Item number twenty-one, this is action item, clerk of the Board of Supervisors, adopted twenty-three Board of Supervisors meeting calendar. Everybody have a copy of the calendar. Basically, this calendar has gone back to what we were a few years ago, where the third Tuesday of the month has been left open, because we had adopted a resolution at one time, or in order of one time, that that was going to be specifically for study sessions, but we started getting into regular agenda and wasn't a special meeting anymore. So we've gone back to that, and a lot of it was because most of our other meetings, we've been, been done before twelve o'clock, and then we'd have to come back on the next Tuesday. So we felt we would go with this, if it needs to be changed, or we need to add something on that third Tuesday as we go forward in the year, we can always do that.
We can have a special meeting?
We can have a special meeting. Sarah, you want to speak on something?
Oh, no, I was just going to agree, county code dictates that the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month are regular meetings, so that's consistent with this calendar as presented, and as Supervisor Stopper mentioned, we can always add special meetings as needed.
If it's special.
If it's special.
Special, special meeting. So is there any board comments on it?
Moved.
Let me open the public comment first. Is there any public comment?
There is no online public comment.
No online, any in the room? If not, I'll bring it back to the Board, I'm open for a motion.
Mr. Chair? Uh? Sorry, Mr. Chair, I was just actually wanting to get clarification for November, if the dates proposed were okay, doing, since we have the first Tuesday and the last Tuesday due to the holidays and the CSAT conference?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
That was something I took into consideration while I was looking at it, so thank you, Stacy, for getting that in there, I like that.
Of course.
Thank you. All right, so bring it back to the Board, is there a motion?
Moved.
A motion by Supervisor Paulendorf.
I'll second it.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Move on to action item twenty-two, this is action item, clerk of the Board of Supervisors, assigning members of the Board of Supervisors to various committees for the county year 2023. And we have two copies, one blank one, and then we have one that's color-coded showing each supervisor as a color and what they are currently, what committees they're on. So is there any board comments? Jack, I think you had something that you wanted to bring up on RCRC?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of items, and Clerk and I have discussed this, so it's all pretty squared away. What the local government finance authority is actually going, goes by Golden State Finance Authority, and the Rural Home Mortgage Finance Authority shouldn't be in there, it should be Golden State Connect Authority. So those are changes for the record, Clerks aware of them, so those are RCRC subdivisions.
Okay, is there any requests to be on any other committee, oh, sorry, Ben?
I'm not requesting to be on another committee so much as the RCRC, I'm the alternate for it. Ms. Paulendorf's been doing quite a bit of work with Mr. Guaramendi with the RCRC, I think she may be a better fit as alternate if she's willing. And, you know, other than that, I had a conversation with Mr. Hubbardey on the Calaveras Mariposa Community Action Agency, and if he's willing, I may pass off my position for that to him, providing I retain the ones I'm on. I have, I'm taking on a few chairmanships this year with Central Sierra Economic Development District, and my load job training and others, provided those votes go the way I think they are. So I'll be taking on quite a bit more load, especially with the SURF funds and the other things coming in that we're dealing with this year, so, yeah, if I could hand those two off and the other Board members are willing.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd be more than willing to take that, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I've got one also, we were discussing the LAFCO appointment with Supervisor Collins' retirement. I've got several districts that are going to take a lot of attention next year, so, to get squared away, I see Mill River's in the room, Ken Bender came down today, he's not listening to me, but I'm talking about him.
I'm sorry, are we listening?
I'm sorry, Ken, I was just giving you grief. But, so I don't know whether, I don't know whether Supervisor Paulendorf would be, she's the alternate, I mean, on there, and Supervisor Stoffner, I assume you want to stay on?
I do, Supervisor Callaway was also on that, there's two Board members.
Exactly, so I was kind of hoping that I might be able to-
And I'm finding the alternate, Jack can have it.
Okay, all right.
Just because I've got a couple of hot items that I need to get up to speed on, and they're going to be impactful.
Okay, that's fine. Anything else?
I just was going to point out, I think we already voted, but Supervisor Stopper, you still want to move over to the CSAT?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I think we did that back in November.
Yeah, Stacy, is that all clean?
Yes, we just reconfirming that those are staying as we-
So that now open for an alternate, though? Martin?
We already vote-
Amanda was-
Amanda was the alternate, okay, all right.
If that is still okay with the rest of the Board?
Yeah, that's fine. Are you writing all these down? Are you going to look at the video afterwards?
So, Mr. Chair, could I ask you, I will, I will take on all Supervisor Callaway's old appointments, then?
Other than the ones we just talked about?
Right.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, is any-
You can have them.
Is there any other comments?
I'll move the suggestion, if there's no other comments from the Board, I'll move the item.
As we discussed?
Yes, as we discussed, and Stacy has caught those notes.
Stacy's got it all.
You got it all? Okay, well, let me ask, is there any public comments in the room on this? Seeing none, is there any online?
There are no online public comments.
All right, so I have a motion by Supervisor Paulendorf, do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Supervisor Stopper. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. We'll move on to item, action item twenty-three, this is action item, clerk of the Board of Supervisors, appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas. Do we have board comments? Can't open it up, I have some-
Few, few we have to separate here, I think.
Yeah.
Because there's some choices.
We do, but I gotta get it open.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I can, on Parks and Recreation Commission, I have a spot open for District Two, I'd like to pull that and table that, I table that appointment, not make that today.
That's fishing game?
No, Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation.
This is District Two, I'd like to pull that for right now, come back later.
All right, we're going to pull Parks and Recs, District Two. Okay, so we have a couple of them that we have to make a choice for. All the other ones, I think, there's, Solid Waste Task Force, Prevent Child Abuse Council, Planning Commission, pulling District Two.
Planning Commission's pretty straightforward.
Just, we've Parks and Rec for District One, we'll have to pull that one and determine who's going to be on that one. We have Murphy's Creek, which is good. Library Commission, Library Board is Sarah. Hardware Advisory Board, looks like we are okay there. And Fishing Game, looks like that's good, we don't have any decision to make there. CSA twelve, no decision. Children and Families Commission, no decision there. Well, we have a decision, whether we want those people on or not, but it's not multiple people. Central Sierra Economic Development District, Kathy Galino. Comanche Regional Park Advisory Board, we'll have to pull that one, there's only one vacancy and two candidates. Area Twelve Agency, only one candidate. Agriculture Advisory Committee, only one candidate for District Two. And those are them, looks like we have a couple.
I think, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I think we got the RC, RCD, we have to make a choice there, too. I don't know if there is.
I just want to-
Well, yeah, we do for second member, yeah, there's four members with two spots.
It says two spots, is one of those a, did they only put in for the member two on the applications, or is the member one a specific spot? Because I know they have some defined spots that have to either do with water or other things.
I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, but I believe that the, any of those four applicants could be appointed to both of the two empty vacant spots.
Correct.
The four applicants, two spots.
So how do you want to do this, Mr. Chair?
Well, I think we should, does anybody have any comments or any issues with the candidates that are only in one vacancy and applicants for that? We can get those-
Only, only the one that I want.
Only one that you have in District Two for Parks and Recs? We can do a motion to do those, and then we can come back to the ones that have multiple and have a discussion with them.
So moved, sir?
Okay.
Any public comments? None in the room, is there any online?
There are no online public comments.
Okay, then I have a motion, and I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. We will move on to the Comanche Regional Park Advisory Board. This one has one vacancy and two members applying for it. This is within my district, and I'm good with Natalie Swanson.
So moved for Natalie Swanson.
Have a second?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, is there any public comments? Any online?
There are no online public comments.
Call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. We'll move on to Parks and Recs, this is District One, since we pulled District Two off, there's one vacancy, and I am good with Judy Allen.
Move, Judy, for Judy Allen.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, any public comments?
No online public comments.
Hearing none, call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. We'll move on to Resource Conservation District, we have two openings and four candidates.
May I make a proposal?
Sure.
I would make, you know, with the incumbent, that, I would consider that for one of the positions, and Yvonne Tiscornia is very involved, I would, I would make that recommendation for the member one and member two positions.
I second that.
Is there any other comments by the Board? All right, is there any public comments on that?
No online public comments.
Okay, so I have a motion, and I have a second for Brady and Yvonne, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero, and I think that covers all of them.
Yes.
So we will move on to item twenty-five.
Twenty-four?
Excuse me, item twenty-four. This is Agreement of Planning ID number seven zero eight one, authorized Board Chair to sign a contract amendment extending the term of the county's agreement with Miller Planning Associates to assist with the county zoning ordinance update from January first, twenty twenty-three- update from January first, twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Here a brief progress update from the planning department. Gabriel?
Good morning, supervisors. Congratulations, Chair Tofanelli and Vice Chair Garamendi. The item before you this morning is a request to extend the contract for Miller Planning Group. Miller Planning Group is the group that, a consulting group that the county selected in twenty twenty to do our zoning code update. To date, we have some deliverables. However, those deliverables still require an extensive time to be spent by staff. So, off the bat, I would like to make an amendment to the recommendation in the first paragraph of the staff report that authorizing the board to sign a contract extending the term of the county's agreement with Miller Planning Associates to assist with the county's zoning ordinance update from January one, twenty twenty-three to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. So, we're going to go one year stretch on this, not two. I think we can get the job done in one year. And the second part of that recommendation is that to authorize the chair of the board to sign the first amendment professional services agreement, which is attached to page three hundred and ten of your, of your package. And so, rather than entering into a totally new contract, we're just going to have a one-pager that just amends the term of the contract because it expired in December, and we want to extend it by one year to allow for all the work to be completed. As I mentioned earlier, there are some deliverables that we already have, and we need some time to actually go through them and start initiating the public engagement process, and gradually bringing that before the planning commission and members of the public, and ultimately come before the board of supervisors for approval. As far as funding is concerned, financing, it's already budgeted for, so the budget is not changing. We're not changing anything else except the term of the contract. So, if you have any questions for me, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Is there any board questions? Martin, your light's on. You have a question?
Sorry.
Mr. Stopper, not so much of a question as this area resides near your district, but within my, within my district. This thing's been on the books for quite some time. I think they had the opportunity to try to work with some amendments, but they decided to stick with what the plan is for now to get this extension in at this time. You know, as long as they follow the process, I'm in full support of, so full support of this.
Any other comments or questions by the board?
Thank you very much.
Get her done.
Thank you.
Hold on to Gabriel, just one second. Do we have any, do we have any public comments or questions? Is there any online?
There are no online public comments.
Okay, thank you Gabriel.
Thank you.
I'll bring it back to the board. I'm open for a motion on item number twenty-four.
So, okay, Ben, I'm sorry. You please. I'm second. I meant, I'll second Ben's motion.
I have a motion by Supervisor Stopper, second by Supervisor Garamendi.
Sorry, if I, if I may interject, just so we're clear. The item as presented is to enter into a two-year amendment or two-year extension. So, just so we have clarity, the motion is to direct staff to enter into a one-year amendment. We'll obviously have to check with the contractor, but presuming that's acceptable, and then authorize staff to execute that, so it doesn't have to come back to the board.
So, what do you like to do, Mr. Garamendi?
Yes, Mr. Stopper, that would be appropriate.
Okay, I'll second, I'll second Mr. Garamendi's motion.
Thank you for clarifying that, Sarah.
No problem.
Yes. So, now I have a motion by, well, we had a motion on the floor, so he has to amend his.
I didn't, I never made the motion, Mr. Garamendi.
Mr. Toffler, I would like to make a motion, clarify with, as, on the item with the change of one year versus two years for the contract. Because Gabriel says we're going to get her done, so.
And you're second still?
Yes.
Okay. The motion is the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. We'll move on to action item number twenty-five. Public Works, provide direction to Department of Public Works staff regarding the Murphy's Downtown Street Light Project. To either, one, provide loan from the general fund to the Murphy's Lighting District to fund the shortfall for construction of the project, or two, reject all bids receiving the invitation to bid twenty-two dash two zero four zero dash four zero four dash nine one two, revise project plans, specification and estimates, and issue a new invitation to bid. Robert, you have a big book you're bringing forward.
Good morning. As you may know, this project's been around for quite some time. The pandemic has slowed us down a little bit. We've had to accommodate the platforms on Murphy's Main Street. Meanwhile, plans have been prepared. We've gone out with the solicitation of bids, and the bids came too high. So, in one of the first things that we do when bids come too high, we come in and we reject the bids, go back to the drawing board, perhaps adjust the plans a little bit, and go out to another solicitation and see, make sure that those bids come in closer to what's, the funding is available. As we were preparing that, there was a question that was asked, whether or not there's a possibility for obtaining some funding for the project from some other sources, from the general fund. And that way, we could proceed with the project as it was currently planned, and we move forward. That question was explored. And in exploring the question, we went back and looked at all records when the Murphy's Lighting District was formed back in the nineteen twenties. We looked at different things that the general fund can do. County Council was deeply involved in all those conversations. And the answer to the question is, the general fund can't help in this regard at all. So, we really only have one option at this point, and that is reject the bids. And we will go to, back to our engineer. We'll discuss with you the, what can we do to adjust the project, to bring the project more in line with the available funding. So, that's, that's really the only option that we have at this point. Let me take an opportunity to acknowledge the work that Jacob and Kelly have been doing on this project, years of work, and we continue to do it, and hopefully this, this year, it's delivered. Thank you.
I do have a question. This is a lighting project, so could the possibility exist that would fall under Rule twenty-eight? Some of those funds could be appropriated for this? No?
That, that Rule twenty-eight question will require, we, we probably need to discuss Rule twenty-eight. There are many things occurring with Rule twenty-eight, including PJM's efforts to discontinue the program, but for the Murphy's undergrounding project, no.
No? Okay. I just thought I'd throw it out there and see the possibility of it.
Yeah.
Okay, Martin, your light's on.
I would like to ask you, Robert, in rebidding, it was my understanding that we could rebid this pretty quickly. Is that the case?
Yes. There are statutory requirements that we must meet. We have to advertise a couple times in the newspaper and so forth and so on, but it doesn't need to be a very long extensive solicitation process.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other board comments or questions? Is there any board, I mean, excuse me, is there any public comments or questions online?
There are no online public comments.
Okay, so we need a motion to have Robert send this out, the rebid, and bring it back to the board.
So, I'd like to make that motion, and that motion would be then to reject the bids? Is that correct? And to, to put it out for a new bid?
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
We will move on to item Supervisor's Announcements. In compliance with Government Code five three two three two dot point three D, board members should write a brief reports on any meetings attended at expense of the local agency, and may make other announcements or report out. We will start with Ben.
As we've all lived in our various areas of the county, it's been a very interesting last few weeks. I just want to make the announcement that, you know, it takes every bit of staff involved, all, from, from a tech in administration to the CAO, to public works, to the guys on the ground, to OES, to our sheriffs, to our fire people, and I'm, I'm just too numerous to name everyone. I'm including everyone. I just want to thank everyone that's involved for the work they do, including the supervisors, because we're fielding calls. We know what's going on in our certain districts and the public and everything. And, you know, I just want to say thank you for all the work everyone's done.
Thank you, Ben. Martin, do you have anything to report?
There we go. I would just like to thank the board. I'm very honored to sit here. I really want to thank Craig, Sarah, Stacy for getting me prepped. I really appreciate the time that you've taken to get me up to speed, and it's just an honor. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to, I'll be attending the RCRC Board meeting, down in Sacramento Lights meeting, called to say connect. RCRC Board meeting, called to say connect, all those associated committees. I also want to echo what Supervisor Stopper said. Our crews, our emergency responders, fire, sheriff, I mean, they have been working around the clock, and attitudes seem great. We're getting stuff done. They've been working really long hours, and some of our neighbors, and, you know, they're not, you know, this is like a fire, I think, as John said the other day to me. In a fire, you just keep calling in more resources, and eventually you could get ahead of it. With the rain, it just keeps falling, and doesn't really care what you have to say about it. So, I want to thank everybody who's working on this, and we're not done yet, but I'm just really impressed. We've come so far since, seven years since the Bute Fire. It's unbelievable. Very pleased.
Thank you, Jack. Amanda?
Last night I attended the Utica Water and Power movie show that they hosted at the Beth Hart Theater. I believe they'll be having a second showing up in Murphy's. I think it's due to be determined due to weather. The staff there has been pretty busy trying to keep the phones cleared out. But it was a really great movie, and the turnout was unbelievable. I mean, you can even poke another call in the parking lot. So, it was really a, how many people, how many individuals in the community came out to learn more about the water system? So, I mean, I learned a lot more as well, even being on that board previously and chairman, there was things that I, they brought up in that movie that I was unaware of. The, I too will be going down to OCRIC next week. And then, just thank you, Martin, for putting up with us and coming on board, and welcome to, to the board, to the county. So, congratulations.
Wait a minute. I know what intention did that last remark.
And then I just wanted to take some time to thank the board. Thank you for your support over the last year, every one of you. I couldn't have done it without you. We've did a lot of work, and just thanks for trusting and allowing me to lead the board. And also, thank you to staff. I know it was a lot of ups and downs, and thank you for helping me through the last, the last year, especially the last couple of months, having Craig here. Thank you, Craig. It's God sent. And I just really appreciate it. It was an honor to lead the board and the county the last year. And congratulations, Chairman Tofanelli.
Thank you, Amanda. And I want to echo Ben and Jack's comments and John, our OES director's, comments to all the people that are involved in keeping us going here. And in minutes' notice, they're up, they're out. We had trees covering Highway twelve and twenty-six this morning. It was almost you couldn't get around. You couldn't get here from our side of the county, it seemed like, but they got out there, they got it cleared. Twenty-six was cleared, you could go around. We had a stream of traffic going that way, and a stream of traffic going back up Toianza Hill, Toian Hill. And it was very, it took me about forty-five minutes to get here this morning, but the work crews were out there. They were doing their job, and they have been since that first storm hit on January first, or December thirty-first, actually, New Year's Eve. And they've been busy ever since. And we've got, according to last night's news, we have five storms lined up coming our way the rest of this week and part of next week, and a lot of rain, hopefully not as much as the light show we had last night. And some of the wind howling, they predicted only thirty, thirty to forty mile an hour winds, but I think last night, at least in my house, it must have been going a hundred miles an hour. And then, we were woke up at three-thirty this morning with our phones, county phones blasting the tornado warning. I don't know how many people went back to sleep after that, but I did. We were up ever since. So, thank you, work crews, for doing your job, and everybody involved, all of you. Thank you very much. And with that, we stand adjourned.